All right, we will call this meeting to order at 6:31. We are going to start with one item on our agenda that was sent to council on behalf of the administrative committee. This item one is for adoption and possible first reading of the bylaw. And we have both Selena McLean-Moore as well as Robert Sizens here to support us. Mrs. Moore is Director of Economic Development and our manager of planning is Robert Sizens. So here to discuss and answer any questions we have is Selena, and I'm going to turn the floor over to you whenever you are.
Before you do that, Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add another item to the agenda if it's all right?
Absolutely, no problem.
So I'd move that agenda item number two, motion to close the meeting to the public, be removed and replaced with an item called City of Medicine Hat Environmental Framework.
Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
All right, any opposed to that? And I guess we will vote. Counselor McGrogan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Oh, and Counselor Sharps, I was unaware you were online. How do you vote? Rondi, I'm wondering if perhaps we have a connection error with Counselor Sharps. So for the time being, I'm recommending that perhaps we, oh, she's got her hand up. Counselor Sharps, go ahead. I think you might be muted, I'm not sure. Can I make a recommendation that until we have connection from Counselor Sharps that we continue as if she is not present? Okay. Thank you. So now we, I just want to make it known that we now have two items on the public agenda, the first of which is going to be supported by our two speakers here. And then the, the second item was supposed to be enclosed and will now be number two on our open. So if there are no other comments, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. McLean-Moore. Go ahead.
Thanks, Council. Can you, can you hear me okay? Okay. All right, so I'm here today to, tonight to review some recommendations for our incentive package as well as some policy revisions and bylaw revisions. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna first off make some recommendations. I'm gonna go over the, I'm gonna make the broad recommendations. I am then gonna go over a little bit of background around the incentives, go into more detail around the recommendations, and then I'm excited to be able to present what our 2024 incentive package recommendations are going to be, and that will be the, that'll be the final piece of the presentation. So our three recommendations that I'll be reviewing tonight are to repeal Policy 0170 and approve Policy 0179, amend Bylaw 4667 with the first reading of Bylaw 4799, and finally, an approval of the 2024 incentive programs, the first one being the City Center Vibrancy Incentive and the second being the Housing Infill Redevelopment Incentive. So a little bit of background, in 2021, the City of Medicine Hat Economic Development Department proposed two incentive strategies, one being, both being to, to support existing business and housing development efforts in an effort to attract investment. So the first one was a grant-based and the second one was tax-based. At the time, we had, both incentives were created under the same incentive policy 0170. In 2022, what we, what was recommended was that there be a tax incentive bylaw created to be able to put the tax incentives under rather than under the incentive policy. So they created the tax incentive bylaw, which was required in order to be able to execute the tax incentive. So the first recommendation is around Policy 0179. So the reason that we decided to change, to actually repeal 0170 was because when we started to look at all the different changes that had to be made to 0170, it became just too much to be able to walk council through. There was, there was a lot of different changes. And so what we decided, it was best to just recommend to repeal the policy and, and present a new one. So that policy now is 0179 that we're recommending. So one of the big challenges with the previous policy was that they included all of the incentive program details within that policy. And so what that meant is that every time we wanted to be able to change a set, an incentive, we had to get the, we had to bring the policy forth to council to be able to make those changes. So it made sense to take those, those program details out of the policy and just put them as an attachment to any type of presentation that we wanted, wanted to make to council. The second piece was around financial analysis. So now, we, we previously used to take our incentive programs to admin committee and they were, they were reviewed and any type of, any type of results were looked at by admin committee and, and approved there. We are now taking those results and they will be reported to audit committee by the end of the first quarter of the following calendar year. The third recommendation is around the approval, approval process. We will be recommending that approvals are done by the executive leadership team going forward. So the recommendations under Bylaw 4667, so we're removing the tax incentive processes that were previously held under Policy 0170 under the bylaw as procedures. So this is the, this is, these are the recommendations that I had talked about earlier. The second thing is we're doing is we're authorizing the CAO to establish guidelines, rules, and procedures regarding the application process for and the administration and implementation of the tax incentives under Bylaw 4667. And the third is we are going to be removing references to Section 364.1 of the MGA from the bylaw. So now I'd like to present what our teams have put together, the, I'm going to talk about the, so the land, economic development, and planning departments that worked together to develop the 2024 incentive programs. So in 2021, we had $5.2 million that was allocated to incentive programs, and over these four years, we've got $1.6 million remaining. So I'm actually coming, I'm not requesting any new funding, it is just, it's the allocation of the remaining funding. So after an analysis of, of the current Medicine Hat housing market, what we found was that we are in different circumstances than we were in 2021. We are dealing with a housing shortage within the municipality. We're looking at a zero to 1% vacancy rate, and we are looking at a low supply of attainable housing. I, I think that the, I've got some stats with me, but one of the, one of the stats from the MLS, the listings is last year in January, we were at 400 listings, and this year, year over year, we were down, down to 100. So we have a, we have a really short supply of, of housing, and what that's, what that means is that housing prices are going up whether, whether you're renting or you're buying. And so this is something that's, is also contributing to the affordability crisis that, that so many are, are being affected by right now. So what we've, what we are going to recommend is that an allocation of 1.4 million go to the support, the, the development of multifamily housing through a program that we have called the Housing Infill and Redevelopment Incentive Program. And as well, in anticipation of the Third Street Downtown Utility and Surface Upgrades, we are going to allocate 200,000 that will be used to support the downtown businesses to continue offering that program. So I'm going to go into just a little bit of detail on these programs. So the City Center Vibrancy Incentive, it used to be actually called the Waterfront District Vibrancy Incentive. We have, we have changed the name of the zone. So we really, this program is, is really all about investing in the downtown core and supporting the small businesses. So this program will provide up to 50% matching to a maximum of, it's supposed to be $25,000 per property for commercial property improvements that are expected to add to the vibrancy, sustainability, and livability of the city center. You will see on the back of your package, there is a map that, that indicates what that zone is, and it's actually the zone within the red, the red, the red borders. So the second package, the second part of the package that I'm going to be presenting, this is the, this is the big change that we have from last year to this year. This is the one that we worked quite, quite, quite closely with planning and land on, and I, I, I think that, I think that we've got a good solution to possibly identify, or possibly resolve some of the challenges we are seeing with the attainable housing issues. So the Housing Infill and Redevelopment Incentive will be a two-tier incentive, so I'm going to explain the first, the tier one first. So we will be providing, we recommend to provide an incentive of $15,000 per dwelling unit to a maximum of 750,000 on new residential development on a single site. So this will only apply to new construction projects in the area that we have indicated in the map, and it will be considered as eligible development for, for the incentive program. The different types of built forms will include multi-unit housing, like apartments, townhouses, stacked houses, stacked townhouses, fourplexes, also row housing, duplex housing, triplex housing, and semi-detached. So I'll give you an example of how, how this is going to affect the city bottom line. So for the tier one, if we were to have a developer put in a project where they wanted to develop a 20-unit townhouse development, that would be an estimated construction value of 5 million. At the 2023 mil rate, this would equate to almost $40,000 a year in taxes. So with us paying that, that developer a potential grant of $300,000 on that project, we would result, we would have that, that payback period would take place in 7.6 years. So basically, after 7.6 years, we then have increased the taxes to, to $40,000 for, for that property. If we look at the 75-unit apartment billing development with an estimated construction value of 11.25 million, at a 2023 mil rate would equate to almost $89,000 a year in taxes. The potential grant would be the maximum of 750,000 on the project and would result in a payback period of 8.5 years. So I'm going to move on to tier two. Tier two, we, we've also been receiving a lot of questions about the backyard suite development as an option to, to be able to resolve some of the housing challenges. So we have added a backyard suite development tier for this program, a single incentive of $7,500 on a single site and subject to the remaining funds available in the incentive program at the time of application. So the zoning for this is everything in that map, so within the red borders and also outside, all of those different neighborhoods. So they'll, they'd be downtown Riverside, Harlow, Herald, River Heights, Kensington, Southeast and Southwest Hill, and South Flats and River Flats. So finally, the intake process. So the City Center Area Vibrancy Incentive is going to be very much the way it's been, it's been administered over the last three years. It's first come, first served until funding has been expended. The second, the second program, the Infill and Residential Multifamily Incentive is first come, is not, it's not first come, first served. I'm sorry, I should have taken that out there. There are two intake periods, April 15th to May 15th, we will be accepting applications. From May 15th to June 1st is going to be the adjudication commit, adjudication period. And once we've adjudicated those, we will be issuing the awards. All of those awards are going to be subject to a 90-day window to attain the development permit. Now, the reason we decided to, we decided to add this stipulation was because there were, there have been awards in the past where they were subject to a two-year window from the time that they were awarded to the time that they could actually expend the funds and provide their occupancy permit. And so there was, you know, there was money that we don't, we, we don't know how much, you know, we have the money allotted, but we have to wait two years to know whether they're going to actually use the money or not. So this way, we are more likely to expend that money within, within that first and second intake period. So after the adjudication period, then we move to June 1st, we open up again, and those applications will be subject to remaining funds available. The final piece is that all development permits must be secured between December 1st, 2023, and December 1st, 2024. So I've just put here in, I've put the map in here. Tier one is the locations within the red boundaries, and tier two, all neighborhoods listed, including locations with, within the red boundaries. And that's it. I'll open up for questions.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. I'm going to just clarify that the nature of our council committee of the whole is that it functions like a committee, so we will just be recommending that council receives this for information and then council, I understand that it's, we are council, of course, but it functions like a separate entity tonight, and then we will make a recommendation to council and then vote formally on council when it comes to our next council meeting. So just so, just so it's clear what we're up to. So I will turn it over to those of you around the horseshoe for comments, questions. Thank you. Counselor Van Dyke.
Thank you through the chair, I just had a couple of questions. And do you have a copy of the agenda to check, because I, I'm going by page number on that, sorry. On page 12 of the agenda, there was just a question because there's, I think the sentence is cut off, and so I wasn't sure what it meant. The subject property must be a commercial property within the boundaries of the city center, and then it says properties are ineligible. And that was under the eligibility for the incentive program, and I wondered what got cut out there.
Yeah, so just delete the are ineligible.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something important. And then if I may ask a couple, is that okay if I go on? Okay.
Yes.
On page 13, it says all approved projects must be completed in a timely manner. The incentive award will state date, will state date the project needs to be completed by and other applicable conditions. So is that determined on a case-by-case basis depending on what the project is? Like, I'm assuming if you have a, quite a complex, large build, the timeframe would be longer than if it was something like a backyard suite?
So through the chair, and just going back to that first question, I think what the wording was supposed to say was residential properties are ineligible because this one is purely for non-residential developments?
Okay, thank you.
And then as far as the second question goes, in this one, it doesn't have a time period, like the second incentive program that was discussed. It, it really depends on the length of time of, of how long that project would take.
So who would make that determination then, of what kind of a window you would give developers to do that work?
So I think it would probably be determined based on that actual individual project. So if it's something fairly straightforward, it's not a lengthy process, but for some of the, the larger properties downtown, it could take quite an extensive time for them to complete that renovation. So it would, it probably would likely be determined by whoever was administering the grant application.
Okay, thank you. I did have a, another comment and question. So on page 14, on number 15, it says the payback period should be reasonable in order to not burden existing taxpayers, and I appreciate the inclusion of that because I think there's a concern that when the city is using, running incentive programs like this, that there is a cost that never ends up benefiting the existing taxpayers. So I appreciate the inclusion of that in this document as well. And then my final question is in the bylaw itself, page 19, where it says brownfield means a property other than a designated industrial property as defined in the MGA that is or has been a commercial or industrial property and in the opinion of the CAO, and then it lists three things. And after the second, it says and, but I wonder if it's and or or? Is it all of those things, any one of those things, or a combination of those three things?
Solicitor Bullock, would you, would you mind commenting on that one?
I believe the intention is and on that.
So it could be and any of the three? It, it says is, is or possibly is contaminated, is vacant, derelict, or underutilized, and is suitable for development or redevelopment for the general benefit of the municipality?
So I think the intention was it would have to meet all three of those.
Okay, thank you. That's just what I wanted clarity on. Thank you.
Is that the end of your list? Okay, sounds good. Just remind, I guess, is it Rondi? Are you taking them off, Rondi? Just remind me, or is, does Allison have to take hers off? Perfect, okay, perfect. Counselor Dumanowski.
Thank you through the deputy mayor. Director McLean-Moore, thank you for your presentation. Obviously, being creative with the remaining funds that are, are left over from the previous allocation, it, it's appropriate that you lead off with kind of a narrative of the landscape, if you will, when it comes to inability to access home development or, or leasing or rentals of that nature in our, in our area. It's pretty difficult. We hear a lot about that, so this is obviously a creative solution toward that end. My, my question is really around the, the, the new housing and infill incentives, the, in particular, the $15,000 for tier one incentive per dwelling unit, and in tier two, the 7,500 per backyard suite, if I got that correct. I guess my question is, how did you identify those numbers as being meaningful enough to incent and yet not overly, I guess, prescriptive from the standpoint of taking so many, much of the dollars that are remaining and put it toward, you know, small projects? But at the, you know, I mean, obviously, you're moving toward the, to the end of development, which is really the goal here, but how did you identify those numbers as meaningful numbers that are going to translate over to new development? And I guess kind of tied into that is the 90-day attainment for development period, which I, I believe is prudent. So, you know, did you talk to the development community? Did you look to comparables in other communities? Did you speak to, you know, build in other development environments like that to get feedback before you constructed these, these numbers?
So through the chair, so we did do some consultations with the development industry. When we looked at the, the actual number of incentive, we wanted to make sure that it was pushing projects that were right on the edge, not to completely subsidize a project. So if a project is kind of on that edge of, are they a go or are they a no-go, this, this would help to push them over that edge and bring in some new development. It's not intended to replace the entire viability of a project. We also referencing some of the objectives, we didn't want this to be a really lengthy payback period in terms of we would be essentially negating any tax increase for a long time. So looking at to keep it sub 10 years was, was one of the kind of guiding principles, if you will.
Just if I could supplementary, so the payback period that you actually prompted me to think of another question around the, the payback periods, obviously you identified, I think it were 7.6 years and 8.5. Is that, again, consistent with previous incentives that were rolled out in the earlier versions of, of this incentive plan? And is it, or is this more enticing, more tight of a payback from the standpoint of tax incentive dollars from the community?
So through the chair, this, the term, in terms of the actual number per unit of $15,000, it is the same as the waterfront housing incentive. One of the key differences is the boundary is significantly expanded. Within the previous boundary of the Within the previous boundary of the waterfront housing incentive, it was essentially just the downtown core and then extended out towards the arena lands, which really limited the viability of project sites. Another limiting factor under that program was that it was capped at, I want to say about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which on a large scale apartment project is, is not really that much of a, an impact. So increasing that upper development cap to seven fifty, at least for this iteration for this year. Possibly in the future, that could be revisited. But recognizing that there is only limited funds, we wanted to cap that at seven fifty to make sure that multiple projects would be eligible.
Thank you.
Counselor Hirsch.
Well, I was able to slice a few questions off the list from Counselor Dumanowski. Got a few questions again, thanks for the presentation as well. I think the question might have been asked, but it was kind of rapid fire a little bit. But how does this compare the, the incentive program to other municipalities? So I'll preface things by saying, I appreciate the incentive program in brownfield developments, which means existing lands within the diagram you proposed, which is a little bit tougher to execute than just greenfield. So where the, where the payback is going to be is in the fact that we won't be developing as much the urban sprawl, if you will, or going outside the edges. We are looking at a little bit more within the brownfield. So to get the developers to look at that, obviously, we have to look at options like this. The one thing I want to understand is a couple of different questions. So how does this compare to other municipalities in terms of their incentive brownfield programs?
So through the chair, I, I think many municipalities deal with these sites very differently. Honestly, with, from some of the feedback that we've gotten from developers, they're looking for a very simple, simplified project or a process, and that's why we, we looked at that housing incentive. Brownfield sites can be very difficult to deal with, and some of the environmental factors are often unknown. So that's, I mean, the incentive program does help, but will we actually see a large uptake? It's, it's not likely. We might see some, and it's there if it's, if somebody is willing to take on that risk. But we're imagining that most developers would probably lean towards the more simplified housing incentive project.
Perfect. So with the application, and I think the city, city application was one where you're going to collect all the applicants and then make decisions. So are you effectively going to slice up the pie of the allocation and, and handle best, on a best efforts basis? Or is it still standing on the own, on its own application for the amount of money that we're going to be handing out? Or is it seventy-five hundred until it's empty? I don't know how we're gonna, do you believe we could get oversubscribed here, where we kind of run out, or what's your feeling?
So it is not first come, first served, so we will be doing the application period. We will be evaluating those, those applications. And we have, we will be scoring on a, on a matrix. So each application will be scored. We've got, we've identified seven goals for the, for the actual program. The first one is to trigger new development. The second is to increase the diversity of the housing market. Third, to level the playing field for infill and redevelopment. Fourth, to boost the value per hectare of our urban areas. Five, to recoup and incent with new tax base. Six, to build on existing infrastructure. And seven, to promote small and medium developers. So if we take those seven goals, we will, we will be developing a matrix system to be able to evaluate, to, to evaluate the applications.
So through the chair, so what gets me to my final question is how, how are we going to measure success on these initiatives then? I know you've got criteria and scoring. So is there a barometer that we could expect to get to? Or, or what's your feeling in terms of what would be a success in, in some of these initiatives that we're doing?
Through the chair, I, I think that the, you know, we indicated the different examples and how we would be able to increase our tax base over the certain amount of years that it took to pay off that incentive that we are putting in. That is the one, that's the criteria that we are going to be evaluating with.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Clark.
Thank you. I have five items I want to address, if that's okay, through the chair to Director Kline Moore. So the tax incentive bylaw, as far as I know, well, I'm pretty sure it hasn't been accessed. So, but it doesn't look like we're changing any of the criteria for being able to access those programs. So I would, given how long it's been enforced, would have thought we would have reflected on, you know, it's not being accessed, why is that? Maybe we need different criteria. Just wondering why the criteria are not being changed here.
Through the chair, that's a good question. We, we have, the brownfield tax incentive has been accessed. And what I will say is that we are looking at reviewing the tax incentive criteria for the twenty-five, twenty-six programs.
Wouldn't have had to come to council for, to access it?
This was, this was a program, this was, this was done prior to me being here.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll move on to my next question.
Ultimate respect here, please.
So the, the briefing note indicates that there are no financial implications, but we are adding additional programs. So I'm just wondering, it says it's budgeted for, but wouldn't that to be coming in the next budget? If it's for the next, for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
Through the chair, we, these incentive programs that I presented on are for twenty twenty-four. They are, we are, we are using the remaining budget that was allocated, the five point two million budget that was allocated in twenty twenty-one. We are using the remaining budget this year. And we, we have submitted a business case for budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six incentive programs.
Can you remind me how much is being allocated to the house, like the tier one and tier two of that amount?
One point four million.
One point four million?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're targeting the tier two incentive at backyard accessory units. I'm just wondering why we would limit it to backyard accessory units? Any type of accessory unit would increase the number of dwellings. I'm just wondering why we decided to limit it to backyard suites?
I think I'm, I think Robert can answer that better than me.
So through the chair, in terms of why we didn't include secondary suites, we, just looking at the, the other tier, it essentially includes every type of multifamily development. So whether that's semi-detached duplex. In terms of secondary suites, a lot of secondary suites are added after the fact. So if somebody has a property that's, let's say, thirty, forty, fifty years old, and they want to add a secondary suite, we get a lot of inquiries. Once people realize that the rules have been updated under the new building code, it usually discourages them. So with any of the, the backyards, or sorry, any of the secondary basement suites that we typically see now are from a new build situation. They're not from a conversion. So one of the areas that we wanted to, to look at was not having a lot of funds tied up with these applications. It freezes up the whole system and, and then they, the applicants end up backing out, and we've burned through a lot of the time. The intent, and going back to the previous question, we have, we're already partway through twenty twenty-four. We had money allocated for this program. We want to see it used, because if it's used, it means it's successful. We've been building stuff. A lot of it was for new construction. A lot of the existing use of the waterfront funds were, were just simply for conversions. So we wanted to see new construction, because that's going to actually add to the tax base as opposed to just marginally changing it.
Thank you. Final comment through the chair. On, so on page nine, role of incentive staff. This is page nine of the package. Role of incentive staff. It does indicate that because of the definition of incentive staff member, that a person would need to identify that they don't have a conflict when they're developing, if they're involved in developing an incentive. But then on page ten, one point one A, it only mentions with respect to the city manager ensuring all staff. It only mentions evaluation or approval of the incentive. So development should be added in there, because obviously, if you're developing an incentive, it would be inappropriate for you to develop an incentive that you could easily apply for.
Through the chair, we will make that adjustment.
Counselor McGrogan.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. So, thank you through the chair, just to build on a couple of comments or a comment or a question that Mayor Clark brought up. I'm, I'm really curious about tier two, and I'm thinking of mom and pop, you know, looking at their property, saying, how can I develop this, and they're listening to this tonight? So I'm wondering, first, I got a, a couple of questions. One is the areas that we've chosen, why not other areas? Like, I think of Ross Glen, their fifty-year-old neighborhoods and what have you not. We've kind of picked those areas around the downtown area, and I just would like the rationale, not that I object to it. But I would just curious about that. And, and so I'll just, like, maybe I'll pause there and I'll ask the next question after I hear that one. Thank you.
So through the chair, most of the, the backyard suite applications that we see are traditionally in the kind of more historic neighborhoods. The, they typically have a more standardized lot and fifty feet by one thirty feet, let's say. They have access to rear lanes, which makes these types of developments quite a bit easier. So that's just generally where we see most of these applications. Not to say that somebody couldn't build this somewhere else within the city, it's just they would be not eligible for the grant. And I will note that in the, the grant program, that if there is one point two-two, so on page sixteen. So at the time of September first, if there's still funds that are remaining, we can open it up to other areas of the city to ensure that other develop, infill development is, is captured at that point.
Great, thank you for that. Second question. So we're, we're saying the incentive is seventy-five hundred dollars. What, I guess, what have you calculated as the payback for that? So we're saying, hey, you know what, we give people seventy-five hundred dollars to develop this, whatever the suite. What have you calculated as your payback time for that seventy-five hundred dollars?
So through the chair, with backyard suites, the, the range is, is quite different than a more standardized apartment or townhouse. You can see anywhere, if it's, for example, just a single story, it's a very small suite. It can be fifty thousand, let's say, to seventy-five thousand. I've seen other ones that are quite a bit larger, maximizing, maximizing out the allowances under the line use bylaw, and they can easily run above a hundred thousand. So it's like I said before with an earlier comment, it's not meant to pay for the entire project or even a large portion of it, it's to incentivize and just help with some of the, the costs on, in getting these up and running.
Actually, that, that answers my questions. Thanks very much. And I don't want to, I very much support it, but I think there's a lot of folks out there that are curious about, about what the seventy-five hundred dollars means to their development. So thank you for answering those.
Thank you, Counselor McGrogan. Do you have any further questions, or are you all finished?
Good for now, thank you.
Okay, and I just want to, my understanding is Counselor Sharps, you can hear us at this point. Do you have any comments or questions? So, no, I don't. Okay, thank you. Counselor Hirsch.
Through the chair, just one, one, one mention about the existing incentive programs. I think there was an understanding, and maybe just maybe clarify. Once, once council develops and recommends and actually ratifies the incentive program, is it correct that they, that, that staff go back and just execute on this? Because I think the question was, does council make the decision on the allocation? And we don't, we just set up the guardrails. So there, on five point two million dollars, with one point six million dollars left, obviously, it's been successful. We've, we've, the money's gone out the door. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that once we ratify at a subsequent council meeting, that these applications we betted by, and I mentioned the economic development, you, your team reviews and implements and makes the recommendation, correct?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Counselor Hirsch. So seeing, oh, yes, City Manager Mitchell, thank you.
Thank you, through the chair. Just want to say thanks. This initiative has been really collaborative internally with planning, economic development, energy, land, and environment. And they've all worked really hard together. Something that we're doing for the next steps is we're developing a land inventory so that we can have a better idea of all the municipally-owned lands, and that'll be coming forward early twenty twenty-five. But we're also looking at the constrictions on the brownfield and seeing if there are other ways that we can look at those sites so they're more attractive. So we're working on a few different initiatives, and that will become part of the twenty-five, twenty-six incentive programs, as well as some of our processes to make sure that we're open for development. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And I just want to make a quick comment in regards to the transition we're experiencing with, I would, I'm going to call it a housing crisis. I think that any steps towards ensuring that developers, especially as is mentioned in this document, even small, smaller scale developers have the opportunity to be supported, to be innovative, to create multi, multi-unit housing opportunities for our community, I think that is essential. So I'm, I'm supportive of the work that you're doing in regards to this particular initiative here and the past work that you've done with incentives for our developers in the community. I think it's inevitably going to transition into an environment where we can find maybe not such, I think there's a bit of a double-ended scale, where we've got large, beautiful homes that are kind of on the outskirts, and this allows us to see more of those affordable housing units in the core, and that's what we're looking for. So thank you for the work that you're doing. Seeing no further speakers, I'm just going to ask that we make a recommendation that council considers A through D.
So I will make that recommendation for, to the next council meeting.
Okay, do we have a second or?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And being that this isn't a formal motion, I'm not sure, I suppose we still need a vote. Let's just go for it. We're looking for a vote for this particular recommendation.
I.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, just the point of order.
Yep.
So this was, this included on the, perhaps we should read the motions into the record.
Yes, and I was hoping that the recommendation would include reading out A through D. So maybe Counselor Hirsch, if you don't mind, would you be willing to reread its under-item tax incentives in the middle of that document we've been given, just to clarify for the public?
Certainly, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
So I move that council committee of the whole recommends that council considers A, first reading of bylaw four seven nine nine, to amend the tax incentive bylaw. B, repeal of the incentive policy of zero one seven zero. C, approval of the incentive policy zero one seven nine. And D, the approval of the city center vibrancy incentive program and the infill and redevelopment housing incentive program pursuant to policy zero one seven nine.
And I will second that.
Thank you. And just to clarify, we are not voting on any of these particular individual items. We are. We are just voting to take that bundle, send it off to council, and then we will debate each one separately at that time. Okay. With that understood, we can vote.
McGrogan votes yes.
Thank you, Counselor McGrogan, and we have a text message from Counselor Sharps. She also votes yes. That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Okay, and thank you to Ms. McLean Moore and Mr. Sizens for presenting to us this evening. Thank you so much. Okay, so we have, item number two is our environmental framework. This particular item is for discussion only and I'm going to assume that Managing Director Pancoast will be able to present the information or introduce the information for us. So go ahead.
Thank you through the chair, and we do have some materials that we can circulate, recognizing that we actually had planned a bit of a deeper workshop in close, but thought it would be helpful to have a chance for the public to hear some of the discussions. So we've lifted the materials a little bit to appropriately suit this format and I believe there are materials that can be made available. And to introduce this item, this is in alignment with council's strategy priority 6.5. Council had asked staff to lead the development and implementation of an environmental framework with prioritized strategies and actions, so it wasn't just a binder that sat on a shelf. Council has since approved the environmental topics and goals, a portion of an environmental framework as an initial step towards considering approval of the full environmental framework, which we're hoping to bring back to council later this spring. But this evening, we have a presentation that's meant to remind council where we're at in the process and then to facilitate an opportunity for dynamic feedback from council on action items that staff have identified as high-priority areas that we believe would be helpful to implement the subsequent environmental framework. And although the action plan itself is going to be operational in nature, certain items may require council approval for budgetary purposes. So we thought it would be helpful to get feedback from council early, particularly since we are still drafting that action plan, but also looking to prepare budgetary asks as part of the 25, 26 budgetary cycle. And of course, since the environmental framework itself is a new area for the city, new focus area, those asks would be incremental to historical asks. So we thought we would make sure that we had feedback from council as we're continuing to work that effort. So to that end, we have Director Redden sitting in the back. We have Manager Coombs, who will be leading us through the presentation. And we have Ms. McKenzie from WSP, who is assisting us with this project and she is attending remotely. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Managing Director Pancoast. So as Managing Director Pancoast has mentioned, my name's Adrienne Coombs. I'm manager of environmental strategy and compliance here at the city. So I've been leading the environmental framework project under my director, Kevin Redden, since September 2022. So in advance, as Rochelle had mentioned, in advance of our presentation about the final environmental framework, as well as the approval, we're hoping to garner some feedback and provide you with a project update as to where we're, where we're sitting currently. So today's session, the intent of today's session is to provide you with a project update, which includes a summary of where, what we, where we've left off and additional engagement that has taken place since December of 2023 when we presented the draft framework. We would like to review and discuss the high-priority actions that have been determined through our environment, through our stakeholder engagement, as well as obtain your feedback on those actions and then discuss the next steps to proceed with open council. So we'd like to just start with a project overview to provide you with some context and the intent of the session. So our council strategic priority 6.5 was mandated and environment, land and gas production was directed to lead the development of the, and the implementation of the framework with prioritized strategies and actions. So within that, our objective of the environmental framework is to capture, reflect and build on the city's current environmental objectives, provide direction and strategies for integrated environmental management, identify mitigation of future climate change risks to the city and demonstrate our leadership and commitment to our community and our environment. So the intent of the framework is to deliver an adaptive 25-year long-range plan with emphasis on our short-term actions. So where we have left off, so in December, we had come to you with our, with our framework. But previously to that, we had a number of key milestones that informed the development of our framework, which included very extensive stakeholder engagement. We conducted a baseline review and materiality assessment, which contributed to the establishment of some initial environmental focus topics. Through that, we did a number of internal and external engagement stakeholder workshops, as well as we did do a council committee of the whole presentation and workshop in May of 2023. And then we proceeded with some internal stakeholder focus groups and workshops to further define some strategies and associated actions. In, as mentioned, in December of 2023, we did present the draft environmental framework where the topics and goals within the framework were approved. So an initial list of topics was developed through integration of examination of our proposed key actions, as well as through an initial review of peer municipal environmental plans. And then it was further defined, refined, sorry, to these five topics. So water, energy, air, ecosystem and agriculture, recycling and waste management and community and land development. So within our environmental framework document, there is a number of key elements within each environmental topic. So each environmental topic has its own section and then each section includes the following. So what we've heard, the goals that were identified, an overview, context, some context around climate resilience, some related initiatives that would be either federal initiatives that would relate to these topics and target considerations. What we're going to discuss today are the key strategies and the proposed actions. So all of the work that's been done outside of, within that. So currently, we are at the next phase of the, the project. So we've done the initial, the initial phase and then following the council approval of the topics, we've been further collaborating with city departments to socialize the proposed actions and identify the departmental and corporate priorities and any budgetary restrictions that may come out of those. So then we will return to council with our final framework and proposed action plan. So currently, we're right now in stage three. We've completed stage one and two and then we're looking to do the open council presentation in June and then an implementation plan, followed by a final implementation information session within the operational departments. I should mention also that the intent of the environmental framework is for city operational actions. So we will be leading by example. Where are we now? So right now, we are further refining the actions and developing the implementation plan. So within that, we've engaged with city departments following the, following the action, the approval of the, of the environmental topics to further define the actions. So we've defined some priority levels, high, medium and low, some timelines, anticipated start dates and duration. We've looked at the responsible departments for leadership of the environmental framework actions, as well as the partnerships and the collaborating departments and then resource allocations, including rough order of magnitude costs. The, the implementation, sorry, the proposed action plan is intended to inform the implementation plan. So it will provide the city with guidance on further decision-making processes around the environment, a communication, collaboration protocol and monitoring and valuation process, progress, pardon me. Yeah, the, the implementation of the framework is expected to be a long-term progress, process with annual progress reports. So the following, so we've, we've done a number of further engagement sessions through the project since December. And within that, we've initially developed a prioritization. We conducted a prioritization workshop where senior and executive leadership were asked to identify the priorities from a corporate perspective for our action items. So within that, we identified the actions that were either one to five years, so a high priority, five to 15 years, which a medium priority or a low priority of 15 to 25 years. From there, we took further information into the focus groups. So that was further departmental engagement and we identified timelines and resource allocation associated with each action. So we, we looked at our anticipated start dates and durations, who was going to be leading the actions and then rough order of magnitude around consulting services, operating costs and FTEs. So we also looked at our 2024 and 2025, 26 budget requests and we determined that there are no 2024 out-of-cycle budget implications as part of the action items. And then 2025, 26, there are some budget, budget requests currently in front of, for, up for deliberation in the current process. So. So now to get into the, to the meat of this session. Within each strategy, we're going to look at the actions and look for your feedback as we go through these. So what we would like to provide you is with some important context around, around these action items. So we've determined that these, these will be implemented within one to five years. These are the high-level actions and the new budgets. And new budget items with the high actions will be requested within the next five years. We've also identified actions that are currently underway and the other actions that are included in the 2025, 26 budget, budget requests. So it's these, the proposed action is meant to be fluid and will be subject to our budgetary approvals as, and timelines as they come forward with, with new budgets. I'm going to be talking for a while. Okay. So within our water environmental topic, we do, so going through, we've, we've developed the strategy to develop a citywide water management strategy, which will incorporate water source protection, municipal water utility operation and maintenance, the city's plan for economic development and growth, applicable legislation and response to climate-related events. So within that strategy, we've identified four actions, of which three have been identified by our, through our workshopping as high priority. So those are the ones for one to five years. Within that, we've got conduct an assessment of the city's current and future water consumption needs and resources. So that has been identified as a new budget item. And within the 2025 request, it should be noted that that one is under, currently under our water treatment master plan and that's, that's where that will be captured. The second one is to conduct an assessment of the city's waste, sorry, water and wastewater infrastructure, identifying areas for improvement and upgrades. So that one is currently underway and consists of grant funding. That's already, that's already been budgeted. And then the third one is to develop a proactive and phased water management strategy through collaboration with city departments. Now, this one is a new budget request that has been requested through our department and, and will be under deliberation and consideration for the 2025, 26 budget.
Manager Coombs, can I interrupt you for 30 seconds? I'm just, I'm curious about how you would like us to approach process here. So if you, yep, okay. So are you thinking that we can, because I think if we wait till the end, it's not going to function very well. So if we can give you some around-the-table comments and if everyone's willing to kind of keep it short so that we're not dragging it out too long for each slide, does that work? And then anything that's budget-related, perhaps we can focus on that one in particular. And then if there's any additional comments, then we will capture them here. Does that work?
That's perfect.
Perfect. Okay. So is, do I have, I had Mayor Clark and you're gone. So did I answer your question? Okay. Counselor Hirsch?
Thanks. Appreciate the slides so far. Relative to the commentary on, on new budget items, and I know you went back to different departments, asked them for their feedback. I'm a little bit wary on, and I just kind of wrote some notes down here. I just put nice-to-have versus have-to-have. Is there mandated expectations here by different levels of government? And I just put here barometers of costs. So I think, you know, and my final comment was with no constraints, it's easy to say yes to everything. So do we have, I'm just trying to keep that in my mind in terms of when this get, this approach gets done. What constraints are in place to say how we spend the money? What's the budget even? What, what do we recommend that, on all these recommendations, that what's going to be a go-no-go event in terms of, is there a cost that's too high? Those are some of the questions that are running through my mind.
Through the chair. Well, I'll let Director Redden.
Through the chair, Counselor Hirsch. You'll note in the slides that we indicated whether it's a new budget item and the action is underway or whether it'll be a 25, 26 budget request. There are items, if it says a 25, 26 budget request, that we would deem outside a department's normal compliance and operational budget. And in water strategy, for example, 1.1, number four, a phased proactive water management strategy is a new budget item. And through budget deliberations, you'll see a request if it gets through the internal process and comes to council. Does that answer your question?
It does. And as a follow-up, so, so with the budget requests, anytime a budget request comes to council, it has to have what I would call a business plan. So those metrics in terms of, I don't know if it's cost recovery or, you know, in line with the strategic plan of council, et cetera, is that kind of how the approach is going to be just as standard? Applications and subsequent requests for funding goes?
That's, that's correct. As with all budget requests, there's a business case that will be put forward that outlines all of those parameters and then will be put forward for deliberation and decision.
Thank you.
Okay, Manager Coombs, I don't have anybody else on my list. So if you'd like to go forward, I'm not sure if you feel like you're not getting enough, will you maybe give me a wink or something?
I think what I, what I, in addition to what Director Redden has said, I think what, in going through some of the information with all of the departments and the engagement, what we've found is a lot of the information, sorry, a lot of the action items have been determined to be within our current work structure and our operational resources that we've either currently got allocated or, or are anticipated for future budgets anyways. So what, what we've found is a lot of those action items have been moved up in priority on someone's desk, I think, is what, is what we're seeing. So a lot of it is, is just looking at those things and realizing that we can, we can push some of those things forward without costs. Our next strategy underwater is implement measures to promote water conservation and efficiency within our city operations. So we identified four action items, and then within those three were considered high priority. So, one was create an awareness campaign for smart water use for our internal city staff covering topics such as, as changing levels of, of service and park naturalization, as well as investigating incentives for water-saving grants within the community. So that was an action, again, that was already considered as underway, and was under our current work structure and operating budget. Number two was to develop potable water consumption inventory for all city-owned properties, buildings, parks, recreational facilities, and open spaces, sorry, yeah, to develop a baseline to assess how we're doing on our water conservation efforts. Again, considered underway, and also considered under our works, our existing work structure. The next was to develop a rate calculation for our water utilities that balances our cost recovery, our profitability, and resource protection for inclusion in our water services bylaw. So again, that's within our current work structure and is underway, is being reviewed. Any questions on this one?
Nobody on the list, you can continue.
Yeah. Sorry.
Sorry, Counselor McGrogan. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, so appreciate the comments on the water, and I'm just curious, you said you're looking at different ways to mitigate, I guess, use of water and costs. So what things are underway, if you don't mind me asking?
Those are the awareness campaigns, so around our, our water conservation efforts, and then a consumption inventory. So those, those items are, are the ones that are already underway, specifically for our city operations.
Thank you, can I, through the chair, sorry, can I follow up, just with a quick question?
For sure, yes.
So, the, I guess the fear, if I want to call that, from some of the folks that I've talked to, is that there's going to be a, a meter for water in, and then a meter for water out. Is that one of the, I guess, planned considerations for the future? I guess that's getting a little granular, but I know it's one of the, the things that is being asked.
And through the chair, to answer your question, I think with regards to the environmental framework, this is all around our city operations. So, if we look at that, that may be something further that we may look at, but probably will come through council in some regards.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Now that I misspoke, got it out of the way, go ahead.
Thank you, Andy.
So, wa- water strategy 2.1 is to develop a holistic approach to our watershed protection and stormwater management. Four actions, and three of those were considered high priority. So one was to conduct an inventory inspection and condition review of our existing storm system. So that action is anticipated to assist with operations in maintaining compliance. So it's not a compliance obligation, but it is, is looked at as a, as something that will assist us in maintaining our compliance around a water, a stormwater distribution system. That is, is currently underway, and is under our existing work structure. Number two, A, is to develop and adopt level of services for our water, stormwater management, and B is to develop and adopt a stormwater bylaw to regulate drainage and stormwater quality protection. Again, 2B is, would be considered to assist us as a, as a corporation and a municipality with our compliance obligations around our stormwater. And again, those, those are considered as underway and under our existing structure. And then finally, to develop a citywide master drainage plan that combines existing plans and evaluates outstanding areas to provide direction for management of the entire stormwater system. So that is a compliance obligation, and will, we're looking to initiate that in 2029. Does anyone have any questions?
I have no speakers on my list, you can continue.
Moving on to our energy and air topic, so this one has quite a few strategies associated with it. The first one is increase awareness and implement measures for energy efficiency throughout our city operations. So number one is to develop and implement awareness campaigns regarding energy efficiency in our city daily operations, and develop educational material about energy conservation practices. Now, that one is anticipated to start in 2025, and within our current work structure and resources. Number two is to complete an energy benchmark assessment to identify gaps and opportunities for continual energy efficiency improvement. That is currently underway and is supported through our, our involvement in the net zeros, net zero communities accelerator program. So that one is not anticipated to cost anything at this point either. Questions?
You can go ahead.
Yeah. So our next strategy is continue to identify and implement energy efficiency opportunities at city-owned facilities. One being action item, report and monitor energy consumption annually, so, so that's something that facilities' management currently has underway. And then identifying grant funding for, so we are looking at grant funding opportunities for pursuing with a municipal energy manager position that's being offered as grant funding, that will support a lot of these in terms of an FTE. So, that, that's anticipated to, to be within our current resources or grant funding.
You can go ahead.
The next strategy is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from our city buildings, fleet, and operations. So we identified five, five action items, and two of which were identified as corporate high priorities. One, to investigate financing and grant options, and, and then to develop a corporate baseline greenhouse gas inventory. So the financing and grant, grant operate, options are, are currently within our work structure, we are, we do identify and look at those. And then, the baseline greenhouse gas inventory is anticipated, so it's, it would be a new bu- budget item, as supported through the municipal energy manager grant, hopefully, and then, and we are anticipating some consulting costs associated with that to be confirmed for the budget requests following in 2027.
Continue. Thank you.
The next strategy is to support the community in greenhouse gas emissions reduction, and so that is a continuation of investigate, investigating funding opportunities for the community to transition from fossil fuel heating. So, that's ongoing hat smart program, or our clean energy improvement program, so that's considered underway, and within our current structure.
Go ahead.
The next strategy is implement actions to enhance our outdoor air quality around Medicine Hat. And, within, we've identified three actions, one being high priority. This one was investigate providing parking, bike parking at city-owned buildings that's accessible by both staff and visitors, and exploring secure parking storage for both traditional bikes and e-bikes. And, that was considered to be a priority that we could start in 2027, and again, would be under our existing work structure and resourcing.
So I do have a comment about this one in my notes here. So, I think that, as I was reading through this, I don't, I, I see the, I, I was weighing it in my mind, what has the most impact, like the smallest changes with the greatest impact? How can we use our resources and, and create a shift? And I understand that all of these are, you, as you've said, they're all possible, they're all, the wheels are turning on most of these action items. I see bike storage may not necessarily have the highest utilization, or it may not necessarily be the, the greatest bang for the buck, but would be visible to the community, and a symbol of our values. I think that to, as a resident, or thinking about people that do bike, when you see those spaces and you go, okay, the city does want to support active transportation, or the city does have these spaces for me as a cyclist, I'm not saying I'm a cyclist, I'm just speaking for those who are. I think it really is a great symbol, and there was a couple other examples of that, that you will get to, but I, I'll just allude to them now, so that slide 50 was public transportation slash parking. Again, may not be the greatest, like, conversion of, like, effort to outcome, however, I think one of the most important, because the average person can access it, it's visible. To me, these seem like small but very powerful and important steps, so I'm glad that this is there.
You can continue.
The next strategy is to prioritize our indoor air quality at our city-owned buildings and facilities. So, we had looked at the action item to develop specifications for renovation work at the city-owned buildings that prioritize low-emitting materials. So again, this is something that we are already looking at and is underway. And our final strategy within energy and air, identify opportunities for adding renewable resources to our energy grid. So within that, we have four action items that were, and all four were identified as high priority for Medicine Hat. So one was to develop and implement a clean energy or energy transition strategy. So this would be a new, a new budget item that was anticipated to start in 2027. The, continue to pursue potential pilot projects underway, including our energy innovation challenge in facilities management, solar generation. So, that is a new budget item that's, it's, some of the, some of it's already underway, but there's also a 2025, 26 budget request within, within the budget for, for this year, or for upcoming. Develop an educational program for city staff and council to understand federal requirements that will impact our city energy generation and distribution operations. So that has been underway, and is within our current operating structure. And then develop an education program to build awareness and support various grant funding programs for the community, again, currently underway. So, moving on to our next topic, ecosystem and agriculture was the next topic. Develop a standard city operational program for dealing with invasive species, pests, and vegetation control. We identified three actions, and within those, two of those were hi- high priorities. So, one was to develop and adopt levels of service related for vegetation control on city parks and properties. So that one is currently underway. And the next one was to develop an integrated pest management plan for the city corporate operations. I missed that there was a 2025, 26 budget request, or will be within the 2025 operational budget, but that will be a new item that is being undertaken.
Manager Coombs, we have a question or a comment from Counselor Van Dyke.
Yes, thank you through the chair. So, it's a question in regards to this, but it also goes back to the water section as well. I know that you collaborated really extensively with stakeholders in the community while you were developing this plan, and I do know that some of those same stakeholder groups are already doing some of this work in the community, and I'm wondering if you're planning on collaborating and to continue that work, or running separate programming? Because I know there's like, particularly with this invasive species, we have groups already doing tremendous work in that area and around water conservation as well. So I'm wondering if you're including that in the planning going forward?
Through the chair, those are definitely operational strategies that we will continue and still continue to pursue for management of invasive species across the, across the community. We don't have it specifically outlined that we will continue that, but I, I think it's, it's, we like to see the, the good work that our stakeholders are doing, and, and help them enhance that through some of our own operations. So I, we will continue that, I, I, we can look at putting it verbiage to that effect in, in the framework.
I had a similar question about slide 47, which was growing local food, and how we do have organizations in town that are doing some, what, doing that. And hopefully, we can collaborate or redirect energy to ensure that those groups are support, not necessarily supported, but at least consulted and, and can be leaned on as we do that work, so. Counselor Hirsch?
Thanks. Through the chair, I'm, I'm getting caught up a little bit on develop and adopt levels of service in related areas for vegetation control. So I'm, presumption is that we already have existing. I'm thinking out loud, though, and, and later in the presentation, you're gonna talk about naturalization of some areas. These are gonna be somewhat of a controversial topic, because I know for a fact that houses that are next to areas of city-owned, areas that are undergoing naturalization, for example, we get feedback all the time, you need to mow that, weeds are getting into my side of the yard. How, and I know communication's the answer, so I, that was my question. But I think it's important for, for citizens to understand there is some impact relative kind of what they thought life was maybe prior, and now what the impact could be in the future when it comes to naturalization, maybe a little less mowing, more respect. And I know even related to that, is when we had such high stress due to how warm it was, even us mowing with the, with the worry of clipping a rock that creates a spark that creates a fire, that actually did happen. But the amount of people that gave us feedback saying like, you need to keep mowing, and so our, our, our version of ourselves almost have to get amended, and maybe just to comment on that.
Through the chair, I think our, our Parks and Recreation Department are well aware of the, yeah, the, the ramifications of, of moving some of these parks and naturally, parks to more natural areas. I think there will be some community engagement in, if there's a complete shift in moving some of those from turf grass to a naturalized area. I think they, they do, and I'm speaking on behalf of Parks here, I think they do look at the communities around, and, and look at how that level of service may impact the adjacent landowners, or the, the adjacent houses in the community. So I would anticipate that, that there is going to be some communication if, if things are drastically changed.
You can go ahead.
I'll maybe ask if someone can just advance my slide, it's not. Thank you. So our next strategy under ecosystem and agriculture is to implement planting of trees and shrubs on city-owned properties, and, and encourage our community tree planting and maintenance. Three action items were identified, and two of which were high priority. Update and implement the City of Medicine Hat urban forestry strategic plan, which is currently underway through the Parks and Rec Department. And then, update the list of trees and shrubs for landscaping of developments, which may incorporate some more drought-tolerant species, or, or, or ones that are native to Medicine Hat area. So those, that's, this one, 8.2, number one, number two, my apologies, is anticipated for starting later in 2024. It's not underway, but it is anticipated to begin, and that one, both of those are currently under our current work structure and resourcing.
How does the Adopt a Tree program fall into that category, and how might we see it grow or potentially evolve as a result of a strategic plan?
Through the chair, I'm actually, I'm not, I'm not quite certain how that, how that is, will look for, for the, these action items, so I will have to probably take that back to Parks and, and figure out that for you. So I will have to probably take that back to Parks and figure out that for you.
You can continue.
Eight point three, the strategy is to encourage naturalization and promote protection of sensitive environmental areas. So four actions that were determined within this strategy, and three of those were high priority. The first one, conduct an inventory of city-owned properties, rights of way, environmental reserves in parks to understand the vegetation and maintenance requirements. And that's, that is, that budget item is under our Parks and Rec master plan. So that's not anticipated to, to be an extension of any additional funds. The eight, number two is to develop and adopt a naturalization plan for identified city-owned parks, buildings, and landscape and infrastructure projects. So those will be within operational budgets as well. And then conduct a citywide biophysical assessment. That is a new budget item that will be requested within the 2026 operational budget through the Parks and Rec Department and environment land and gas production leading those.
You can continue.
Again, under ecosystem and agriculture, implement a program that uses city park space or vacant lots and leases with organized groups for local food production. So this one was to develop an education program regarding growing local food and key benefits to that. And then investigate a strategy to use some of our vacant city-owned land as potential locations for community gardens. And those were, they're not yet underway, but are, are under our existing work structure.
I see the possibility here as something that we did with our, our facilities and the recreation opportunities in Medicine Hat. We had brochures that included community group information, even though those community groups weren't necessarily included underneath the umbrella of the city, but the city acted as the, the home to promote. So I think there's potential for that here as well, where we have, we have groups doing good work with growing food. And the, the city becomes kind of the, the home for distribution or information. And then, and then those little tentacles can reach more people because of this being the organization that is more front-facing than anything else. So, yeah, great. And I don't have any other speakers, so you can continue.
So moving on to our recycling and waste management topic, strategy is to encourage waste diversion within our city operations. So one of the items was to conduct a waste audit at priority city-owned facilities to ensure property diversion of waste is actually occurring. And conducting audits of some of our cleaning and waste management practices at these priority facilities. And adding a requirement for recycling and separation of wastes to our city contracts. Looking at that as an easy win, potentially with a, with a new budget item in 2027 and possibly with new FTEs under, but that would be, can come up, come up as business cases and to be evaluated at that time. Number three, investigate requiring waste diversion plans for the construction and major, and major renovations or demolition of city-owned facilities. So again, this is all with regards to our city operations and city, city projects. So we would look to include standards in our city, city construction and demolition contracts for sorting and diversion of, of waste materials. So again, those would possibly be additional items that would need new FTEs or, or potentially some consulting services. Those are to be determined or to be confirmed.
Mayor Clark?
Thank you through the chair. Is it just a misnumbering or was one deleted out of here?
That, that is a misnumbering, yes, thank you.
Sorry, just thought I would check to see if there was one missing. Thank you.
The next strategy is to encourage better waste management and diversion for citizens and developers within Medicine Hat. So implement a pilot, one of them was to implement the pilot residential food waste composting program in accordance with our city waste management strategy. So that's the high priority. There were other, three other action items that were identified within this one. And again, that's already underway under the, it was a waste management strategy, the 2023 and beyond waste management strategy that was presented to council.
You can continue. Mayor Clark, your mic's on.
Moving on to community and land development, the strategy would be to increase demand for and use, and the use of the city's public transportation network. Number one would be to complete a full review of our transit demand, including all geographical areas, identifying areas and routes that may need special consideration for scooters and bikes and to increase our ridership. Exploring the feasibility of adding our bike racks or on buses to, to account for or accommodate traditional bikes and e-bikes potentially, possibly scooters as well. And then secondly, to investigate additional opportunities for public transportation during times of large-scale community events at the various city facilities and parks, with consideration for adding park and ride locations, ensuring ample access to accessible transportation and investigate existing issues regarding parking for mass events at the Echodale Regional Park.
Council Hirsch?
Just a quick question on, on the item number one. Explore the feasibility of adding bike racks on buses. We have that ongoing as it is, right?
Yes.
And are we finding success with that? I see that it's being utilized the odd time. So is that, I'm just trying to understand here. Explore the feasibility of adding bike racks. So we have it already, is it just, is it not fully within the whole fleet then?
So through the chair, I think that was to add some of the optional transportation, like the, the e-bikes and the scooters and some of those that may require some additional racks associated with our, with our, with our buses.
Okay, no, appreciate that.
Yes, and that, and that action is underway. And then the second action was anticipated to begin in 2026 under our current work structure and resources. Community and land development strategy, 11.2, encourage all new neighborhoods are designed as multimodal communities. So within that was to review development policies for new communities to ensure that there are minimum standards for amount of, for amount and access to trails, pathways that are interconnected with our city's active transportation network. This was identified as a new budget item anticipated for 2027, and it was unknown at this time if there would be consulting services or FTEs associated with this. I think we have three more. Strategy 12.1, optimize the use of available land, reduce urban sprawl, and create walkable neighborhoods that encourage active lifestyles. So 10 point, or sorry, 12.1, number one is to create a brownfield inventory, and that's currently underway under my group. And then number three was to develop a strategy to intensify existing commercial and residential zones and encourage mixed-use development at commercial nodes. So I will note that there were three action items identified for this one, and two of which were the high priority. So the, the last one was anticipated for 2025, start with, under our current work structure and resources. So the next strategy under community and land development was to promote ecosystem continuity through a thoughtful-designed open space network, which would, which could include the inclusion of more flora and fauna into the landscape design, incorporation of natural and historical features and connections into open space design strategies. These were all identified as high priority, sorry, my apologies. Four were identified as action items, three of which were high priorities. One was review development policies for new communities, ensuring that there are minimum standards for amount and access to open space network. Secondly, review development and landscape policies to ensure there are minimum standards for natural landscaping, incorporation of landscape features that connect to the city's history while also improving biodiversity. And then the fourth, the fourth action, further examine the allocation of city-owned open spaces to understand distribution and, and form and encourage, encourage purposeful design. So those were anticipated to start between 2025 and 2027 under our current work structure, prior, being prioritized in someone's work plan. Let me see. And then our final strategy is to develop a community education and outreach program to support the environmental framework and our associated initiatives. So using one, using Strong Towns Community Lab to support the strategy, such as creating guidelines for community-led volunteer experiences related to the environment and landscape, ensuring proper planning occurs for activities that will occur, and engagement with the community by creating volunteer opportunities and informing on how they can support the initiatives. And then secondly, to develop and implement a community education and outreach program that covers the themes within our environmental framework. And those are anticipated to be within our current work structure, likely to, to begin after final adoption and approval of the framework.
Council Hyder?
Sorry, through the chair, I'll wait till she's done. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Okay. So our next steps with the environmental framework are to continue to work with our stakeholders to finalize the action plan. We have identified all of those items. And within that, taking your feedback and using that information to finalize the action plan and the environmental framework document. The anticipated presentation date is June 3rd, that we would come back to open council and request approval of the environmental framework. And then just the, for information for the, presentation for information of the action plans. Because those will be considered to be fluid and, and potentially changing with regards to updates and regulation or corporate priorities. And then we would look after June to develop the implementation plan and move that into a final information session with the city operations. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. We'll start with Council Hyder and then move to Council Dumanowski.
Thank you, and through the chair, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. And it was long but very informative. All of this is wonderful work, and it's a plan for the future. Because things in the future are going to look a lot different than, than things have in the past. I don't know where to start with this, but I just wanted to put this out there about, talk about incentives from before, but incentives for water. And not like as residents is what I, where I'm going with this. So perhaps we could look at something there where, through the utility department, where, you know, if you reduce your water consumption, we could have more incentives for that, as well as the, I think it's zero escaping idea of perhaps if you wanted to look at something not as your landscaping, that we could have something through utilities for incentives for that. Just kind of an idea, because as we move forward, water is going to be our biggest and most sought-after resource. So just, it'll be challenging. So just thinking through those things. But I really appreciate all the time you put into this and for your time this evening. So thank you.
Council Dumanowski.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you, Director Coombs, for your presentation. I, just I guess a couple of comments and then maybe a question or two. I, I'm thankful that, and appreciative, I guess, that you, this is being brought forward at this time. I know there was consideration, I brought it up last time when we adopted the, the last stage, about the timing in relation to the budget, upcoming budget, and how we would be able to account for things that we didn't know or things that would come forward. And my frustration, I said at the time, and I'll reiterate, with having the need to make budget amendments on the fly once a cycle has been initiated. So this mitigates that largely, it seems to me. The, the comment around, I guess, the environmental framework overall, I know at the onset of this term, there were, you know, a lot of comments and criticisms around where we were, where in relation to environmental framework and specifically that the one we had or previously done was outdated and wasn't, and wasn't really connected to any logical timeline or goals associated with the corporate goals or the operating structures in play. So I, my, my thought was, and I didn't say much along the way, because a lot of these goals, and I'm not generalizing out of convenience, but a lot of them were ones that I, I would submit were underway or would have gone, been underway had there been environment fund work or not. And this isn't, my comment isn't to say that we did this for, for no purpose. I think at the very least, we're identifying the need for one. We're identifying the importance of having one. We are one of the, you know, remaining communities to really hone in on this. This kind of, I use the word compartmentalize, is it, it kind of puts it into segments that are understandable. For the community, the environmental framework topics, as you've indicated here, came from lots of consultation, including council. So, so we, you know, we've already achieved, you know, something meaningful, something meaningful for the, for the community to, to applaud. And I think that's, and I mean that sincerely. One of the things that certainly stands out, maybe I'll touch on the smaller one, and that Council Hirsch touched on it, was the, the naturalization piece. And I only bring that up because you would think, why, out of all the, the goals here, they're lofty goals and some of them are pretty straightforward. But that's certainly a hot topic discussion in the past for this community. And, and I would submit and echo his comments, it will be for the future. Again, that doesn't mean I don't support looking at it and understanding it. I think what I'm maybe asking for myself and maybe for the community is if it's within the operating structures, I get a sense that, well, so we're going ahead and doing it. How do you, how do you measure that against public sentiment or opposition? How, how do you measure that? These are areas that are clearly within the corporate controls, but as is, again, eloquently been indicated there, everybody touches on something within the city structure, and rightfully so. So how do you reconcile the public's desire or lack thereof for naturalization against moving ahead because it's within the corporate or environmental controls? Or as is indicated here, sorry, the, the operating structures that are currently underway? So how do you reconcile that? And I'm not asking you that because I'm opposed, because I know that's a question that's been asked in the past, and it will be asked in the future, I'm certain of it.
So through the chair, in consultation with the Parks and Recreation Department, I think they're looking at operational efficiencies as well, and whether or not there are areas within the community and within our public spaces and our, our green spaces that they, they really have to, to mow or water, and if those are being utilized. So my, my thought is, is that they, they've already identified some of these, some of these locations that they, they can move into a more of a natural, naturalized, less, more drought tolerant kind of species that, that may be more effective in those areas on, and more efficient for our operations, where we can focus water in other areas. on, and more efficient for our operations, where we can focus water in other areas such as our sports fields or mowing in some of these areas.
And again, I appreciate the on-the-fly response, and I, and I know there's, there are many steps within these individual steps that will have to be undertaken and looked at and, and socialized, um, very carefully to the public. And, and I think every time we experience some success around that, it, it creates the opportunity for future successes. And it's something we have to reckon, recognize and reconcile, because we know water is, uh, is a finite, to some extent, product, and it's becoming scarce, more and more scarce, and there's a cost to it. And so if we can, we can look at that in a meaningful way, obviously, we're going to satisfy the goal. The one that really stands out for me, obviously, is the adding renewable resources, um, the, the pursuit of, or at least looking at the pursuit of, uh, energy innovation challenges, solar generation, et cetera. I, the only comment I have there is, and I know that would have to come back as a budget request, whatever is determined, um, I mean, that's a big one. It, I mean, it could be iterative, it could be small to start, it could be large to start, it could be somewhere down the middle. The landscape in that environment, figuratively speaking, and maybe literally is changing and evolving on the fly with our provincial counterparts and the federal impositions or challenges or goals that they're setting for all municipalities, and we're not exempt from that. So I, I, I endorse that, uh, obviously it will come back, but that is one that certainly stands out of the whole report for me. And I look forward to what comes out of that. I guess, the, I appreciate the fact that, again, through this whole process, we, we've consulted with, um, everyday constituents, uh, you know, the likes of, you know, experts in the field, I'll call them, you know, the grassland naturalists, the Bike Medicine Hat people, everybody who, who wanted to have input. And, um, and, and we've arrived to this point. My question, I know you kind of initiated, and maybe I missed it, and I apologize if I did, but you indicated the high priority areas, one to five years. When, when, when do we identify the medium and low, the, the five to 15 and the 15 to 25 goals? Those are difficult to some extent because of the evolving environment and, and scrutiny around environmental, you know, impacts. But how do we, when, when does that step come forward? And, and I suppose those will come at some future point, regardless whether we, they're identified in here or not, because we will, we will be pushed, pushed is the wrong word, but we might be pushed or pulled, whichever we want to look at, into some of these environments where we need to make some changes. Just a quick comment on that, and then I have one last question.
So through the chair, uh, we, we have actually identified, for the purpose of this session, we just kept it to the high priority items, but we have identified medium and low priority through the entire action plan. So those have already been identified through the prioritization workshop that we went through with senior and executive leadership.
Thank you. Last question is the, um, you had indicated most of these, and if not all of them, are operating structured goals. So I guess, um, when, is this a soft start to, um, how we might delve into this deeper? When do the, kind of the more myopic goals or more residential-facing goals start to play into this environmental framework?
So through the chair, I think we'll see that as we lead kind of through example, well, I, I would hope that we see that the community starts asking us for some of these incentives or some of these initiatives as we, as we move forward. I anticipate a, um, an annual report that will, will come either to council or whatever that looks like at this point, through the act, through the implementation plan, that, that we'll be able to identify how successful we've been as a, as an organization and a corporation in, in executing some of these action items, and then hopefully we'll see that coming through the community.
Well, I gotta close by saying I had some reservations around this whole process, I will admit, I think I shared that along the way, but you've satisfied and, and quite frankly, I'm, I'm quite pleased with everything up till now, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Van Dyke?
Thank you through the chair. I just had a, a couple of, um, comments and questions. So I have made a lot of previous comments, the last time this came to council, I think in December of 2023, so I'm not going to go over those again, but, um, I was happy to see some of the prioritization around water, I think, has changed. I, I'm assuming through internal stakeholder consultations, I think, uh, most people are aware we're in a drought and we are looking at some severe water issues going forward into this year and potentially 2025, so I'm glad to see that the priority levels on some of those have changed. I think that's important to lead the way as, as a city in that area. I did have a question, I guess, it's on the second page of the initial, um, report to council. It says, under internal and external engagement considerations, it says, while the structure, structural separation of framework and plan allows greater flexibility and execution, it also introduces disciplinary risk to achieve the goals and targets as defined under the environmental framework. And this is where I get a bit concerned, because I, I think we all, anyone who works in any level of government, we talk about this all the time, we do studies and assessments and plans and reports, and then they get put on a shelf and there's no implementation or only partial implementation. And we sometimes see that with plans where it was done in the early 2010s and maybe only half or a third of the recommendations have ever been implemented. And I'm just wondering if there's any mechanism that has been put in place to ensure that the work that has been done here actually becomes implemented.
So through the chair, um, the, the plan is for a, an annual report. So my group will facilitate the, um, the environmental framework and we will look towards understanding how the actions have been implemented and look to review that on an annual basis. So review our successes and, and as the action plan is reviewed and reported on an annual basis, there may be some shifts in prioritization or, um, or budgetary considerations or, or something that may change the outcome of the action. So those will be reported back on an annual basis. So that's, the strategy is to have that annual report and, um, and identify the shortcomings and the successes through that.
Counselor Hirsch?
Thanks. Again, appreciate the work, uh, standing in that podium for quite a while, and I know you're gassed, so, uh, I'll be brief. I'm just trying to understand process now, so tonight, um, we had a presentation, it actually is the first time for public consumption in terms of this document. There might be some questions related to it, there might be actually some observations and maybe, maybe counter proposals, if you will, on this, but I noticed that it comes to council, uh, we do an implementation, and then there's a final information session, I presume, to the public. Is there ability for this plan, and I guess a couple of questions, can be amended with any feedback from the community? That's question one. Uh, maybe, and maybe you can answer that right away before I give you a couple of questions and... So is the, is the, is the information presented tonight, um, available for feedback now that the public has looked at it?
Yeah, so through the chair, we do have a, a draft copy of the environmental framework on our Shape Your City page. So the environmental framework is on our Shape Your City page with the proposed action plan, not, um, it, it has had some amendments since, since December, but the bulk of it is still the same.
Okay.
So that can be commented on, and then there's a submit questions on the environmental framework Shape Your City page that people, the community is welcome to, to provide input that way.
That's, that's great. So that's great information, so I appreciate that. And then the, the final piece was, um, when this comes to council for consideration, I, I presuming we're approving the plan like omnibus, so every strategy that you implement, we're presuming nodding our head on that. But I do look at some of the, some of the criteria that's listed there, and I kind of feel like I want a bit more information on it. So, um, process, like, how would that, that work in regards to, um, if there's any kind of additional detail a counselor would like to get on a particular strategy?
So through the, through the chair, the, the intent for the environmental framework is, is for council to approve the document itself.
Okay.
And then the, and we will refer to proposed strategies. So the proposed strategies will be taken as information, and then that will still be executed on a annual reporting basis. So we won't be tied, um, concretely to those proposed actions at this point.
Okay, no, that's good. So you're saying that these are all going to get broken up as initiatives and will be implemented as we go, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, I don't see any further speakers. This particular item, no motion is required because it's just for discussion, um, and as Counselor Hirsch said, it will come forward to a, a council meeting in the future. I just want to make it known that the environmental framework report has now been added to the online agenda, so being that it was enclosed initially and now is an open, it is reflected for public viewing on the website. With no, I'm just going to check in if there's any other comments, discussion, but I think we're at the end of our agenda, so with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.